To order. Thank you, everyone, for coming here tonight. I do appreciate it. We have three people who pre-registered, and thank you for doing that. And it was Peter and Sally and Sharon pre-registered. The rest of you here, are you here to speak or listen? Or if you're here to speak? Like to speak? Okay, others?
Mainly listen.
Mainly listen? Because what we'll probably do at the start of each of these meetings is figure out who's here to speak, who's here to listen, and then kind of allocate time accordingly. So with the three pre-registered and somebody else looking to speak, why don't we, you know, we've got an informal clock here, keep it about seven minutes or so, so we can make sure everybody is in and we're out of here by 6:15, and we can get down to our 6:30 council meeting. Everybody cool with that? All right? Why don't we do that? I see folks recording here or live, and no problem with that at all. I would ask you that you give the respect to your fellow residents, that if they prefer not to be livestreamed in some way, that you put their phones down, I'd ask, right? Yeah, exactly. I think, yeah, that's fine, if everybody's fine with that. But I would hope that if somebody says, "No, thank you," that we'll respect that. So why don't we start? Sally, do you want to start? Come on up.
Now, I asked me not to be recorded, but the conversation be recorded. So record the conversation.
Oh, audio?
Yeah, audio. Oh, okay. All right.
If you could have a seat, come on down. Welcome.
May you order?
Yes, I did.
If you could pass this down, so the may... So yes or no to a question from approved minutes July 2, 2012. That state, a council member, quote, said, "The cup is a contract and asks if it's fraud when someone makes representations to entice someone to make a contract, and then they don't follow through with what they promised." End quote, and then I add, "and/or proposed."
That's a good question. Was that a quote from a council member, or is that your quote?
No, it's a quote from a council member from the council minutes.
Okay.
Happened in 2012, you said?
2012, yeah.
That's the quote. And you're looking for a yes or no answer to it?
Yes.
It would have been nice to have it ahead of time, so we could get the context of it and understand. I'm hesitant to say yes or no without seeing the full minutes or understanding the full conversation around it. So I mean, I'm very hesitant to answer yes or no to that, and I think you can probably understand that, Sally. I mean, it's...
Not on this question, because this question's pretty specific as to just our general process in a city council meeting. When we have a hearing, even though people aren't swearing in, my understanding is that you are to tell the truth. And so if you're in a hearing, and your hearing includes the material you bring, like your proposed use, and then, you know, your conversations with council, that is all supposed to be, you know, to the best of your ability, accurate. And so my question is, are people required to be accurate? And if they're not, is it fraud? Is it fraud to go into a meeting and bring inaccurate information so that you can get something that you want?
I would agree with you 100%. We expect people to come in and be honest with us and to be straightforward and so on. Whether or not, I mean, we don't swear anybody in. It's not, I mean, they're not perjuring themselves if they say something that's not true. It's not necessarily fraud. I mean, I suppose that could be, a legal case could be tried on that, but I don't know what our legal team would say about that. But I think that would be very hard to say that it's fraud, and what you're thinking of as fraud. I can see what you're going with this here.
Okay, to consider it not being fraud, then what parameters do we have to keep people to be honest? So that when they are coming in front of council, they're bringing what their intent is, you know, their proposed use, they're... You're asking specific questions about how they're using their current property, how they plan to use their future property. And if we don't consider this fraud, we just go, "Oh, I mean, it doesn't make sense." It doesn't make sense to run a city where we don't have any, you know, we don't follow up on rules and regulations. Again, even though my understanding is, again, that a hearing is a hearing, and even though you're not being sworn in, you are to be accurate. And we don't have anything in place when someone's not being accurate, and then, you know, we just live with it?
Well, I think, as you know, it's on the back end. It's a, we take at face value what we hear in public hearings. We make decisions based on the information that we have in a public hearing, whether it's vocal testimony, whether it's written testimony, what the staff says, what members of the public say. That's what we, that's what we work off of. And if we get to the other side, approval or denial, let's say, if it's approved, and if we see tangible and verifiable evidence that they're doing something in, that's in direct, direct, Tom, thank you, to the conditional use permit, or what was said, that's when we have the power. Then we can go back and we can revisit the conditional use permit. We can revoke the conditional use permit. But again, it has to be verifiable. It has to be information, not just thoughts or opinions. It has to be something very specific. This is what they said, or this is what the conditional use permit said, and this is what was happening on a regular basis. And put those two together, and that's where the consequences are.
I have to follow up question, just quickly, if I want to make sure I'm just understanding this correctly. So the quote, and I mean, first of all, I want to be, obviously, be careful of the fact that by my count, there are exactly two current members of the council who are on the council when this call is taken. But I just, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that... So the council member said that a conditional use permit is a contract. And that same council member asked if it is fraud when someone makes representations. And you're looking for an answer to that question?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, okay. So you are, you are... I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the implication seems to be that someone, what you would believe made misrepresentations, shall we say, said something that did not reflect the current or future reality at a public hearing for a conditional use permit. And you're wondering what recourse there is to follow up on the truth or lack of truth on that statement?
Yeah, and specifically, a council member had that same question. I mean, this is the council member's question.
That's what I'm, that's, I just want to make sure I'm understanding here, that the question is in regards to the applicant making, which you believe is not a true statement, correct?
Yes, but this would apply to anyone, general public, council, staff, yeah.
Okay.
Something to get more accuracy.
The question generally is, when someone says something at a public hearing, what is the recourse there? What happens next to ensure that folks are being truthful at a public hearing? Am I correct?
Right, and so I am just really looking for the yes or no on this one. And then all of that becomes variations, but yes, I mean, like, do we consider it fraud? And, you know, to move forward for our city to know it, to expect more of people come in front of the council? And yeah, people make mistakes and they misunderstand things. That's not where this is going. This is people coming in and, you know, so...
Sean had a question?
And so I guess, sorry.
No, don't go.
The attorney to legally answer it later, but the conversation is appreciated.
So my question is, what was the answer at the time? Do we know? Does anyone?
I do.
You do?
The answer at the time was the person who spoke did not represent the building making the proposal, which was inaccurate. That was an inaccurate statement. Because the person who spoke was the person who filled out the development application and was signature on many of the forms. And from all accounts, the only person the city actually spoke with. So that was an inaccurate statement. And then later, there was another answer that kind of gave it to the degrees, you know, to what degree. You know, it didn't answer yes or no. There was never really a specific answer. The first one I have documentation for, the second one is just something I remember. And if I'm misremembering that, but again, to me, degrees make sense.
Yep.
So I get the whole degrees where someone, you know, you think, you think this is what you're going to use it for, and then you find out it entailed something that you didn't know. So that wouldn't be fraud. That would be somebody trying to do the best that they could. That was...
I mean, as I said, I would like more context on this. I've learned long ago that you don't ask lawyers to make snap answers. And that a long time ago, so I'm not going to do that tonight. But why don't we, why don't we look at this a little bit more, and we'll see what we can come up with in terms of context for that, if we could. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Peter?
I think he got his name wrong.
Excuse me, question. So when you sign in at a city council meeting, this ends up being photocopied and into the official documents. So it is not something I want to put on if it ends up, my name is fine, but I don't...
I'm gonna have your address on there. Yeah, that's fine. Just, great, thank you.
I know we screw up sometimes, but we try to adapt that anyway.
Yeah, we do. Hello, Peter, how are you today?
I'm doing quite well. Yourself?
Doing well.
Excellent. Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to make this presentation. Thank you, Mayor Bussie and council members. My name is Peter Bowe, also known as Santa Claus. That's that. I'm here to propose the idea of a Christmas tree lighting ceremony in Bloomington. I've contacted the following offices here at City Hall regarding this idea: Community Relations, Park and Rec Division, and the South Loop Division. Also, I have contacted the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, Optimist Club, and the Knights of Columbus, all of whom expressed their interest in being involved with this project. Former council member Karen Nordstrom likes this idea, and Mike Hanks from the Bloomington Community Paper is interested in doing a story about this lighting idea. Matt Brillhart, City Council Administrator, has already volunteered to be an elf. As we all know, we've gone through a little over two years of some really tough times with COVID, which has affected all of us a bit differently. But for the most part, for the first time in our generation, we dealt with in-home isolation in an effort to combat this virus and to assist in saving lives. Observing the last two Christmases and how there were cases of even families not being able to get together, it was a new experience for all of us, and it changed us. It affected the whole community life of Bloomington as a whole. Most of us have gotten used to staying in our houses, and now that things are opening up, we are having to readapt to a new normal in our society, neighborhoods, schools, and life in general. I was born and raised here in Bloomington. I graduated from Lincoln High School. My wife and I raised three boys here, and they went through the Bloomington school system, all graduating from Jefferson. My experience as a child in Bloomington was wonderful. All of our boys loved this as well. We were involved in many extracurricular activities, BA, baseball, hockey, the Boy Scouts of America, where we participated in many community projects. And I can proudly say, all three of our boys achieved Eagle Scout. Through these associations, we felt very connected to our community. As we are beginning to get back to normal, everyone seems to struggle with resuming their normal activities. I'd love to see Bloomington come back to the way that it used to be in the aspect of neighbors knowing neighbors and our welcoming spirit that we've always had. I would like to do something to re-inspire and reconnect the community, to reconnect old neighbors and welcome new neighbors that have moved in during the pandemic, who may feel isolated themselves as they haven't had the opportunity even to meet their next-door neighbor or experience all that Bloomington has to offer. I would like to propose an idea for bringing Bloomington back together as a close community that it once was. I know we have a Christmas tree lighting at the Mall of America, which is awesome. But that's only one side of Bloomington. I would love to see something more centralized and less focused on retail and more on community for all to enjoy. A tree lighting would bring in people from northeast, south, and west. We could also incorporate some type of Christmas donation, toy drive, coat drive, or food drive, whatever would fit nicely into this niche. It would really be wonderful to see neighbors getting reacquainted with their neighbors and meeting new neighbors who have moved in over the last two years. What a better time to get together than Christmas. A non-denominational Christmas tree for everyone. Because Christmas is the most wonderful time of the year. I'll conclude with a quote from the late Agnes M. Farrell, a well-respected American writer and artist from the mid-20th century. What is Christmas? It is the tenderness for the past, courage for the future, courage for the present, hope for the future.
Thank you, Peter. And you talked on Saturday.
We did.
I agree with, and the best Christmas tree lighting that I saw was in Pittsburgh. I think you were there for that, weren't you? Downtown Pittsburgh, they had the fabulous entire lighting of downtown. I really liked it and agree with you, and I agree with the, all that you're bringing forward about possibilities about what this could do. Council any questions, any specific questions? John, go ahead.
Are you familiar with what Burnsville does? Because I know they do a lighting in the heart of the city development near their theater area. And it is a privately-driven fundraiser that provided all the lights, but then the city has provided the location for it. And I know the mayor is always, is kind of, you know, not to get too big for Burnsville, but you know, sort of like the president lighting the tree, the mayor goes and lights the tree.
Absolutely.
Mayor, who's been there a few years longer than our mayor. You know, they've done a great job. Have you connected with them at all in terms of how they have done that and developed that program? Because it seems to be well-attended, well-appreciated event there. And, you know, candidly, it's been something I've talked about before with people privately that makes some sense to me. But I think it has to be done the right way.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for the suggestion. No, I haven't contacted Burnsville. And that's kind of why I'm here, is to get some ideas of other things that I need to get accomplished or have accomplished for this. There's simply getting a tree, getting it decorated, getting electrical for it, getting traffic taken care of. I've tried, but I haven't gotten a hold of the City of Edina. They do a tree lighting on 50th and France. I was going to talk to them about their, you know, what's worked and what hasn't worked. But so far, no one's answered the phone.
Good.
I didn't realize you were being that formal.
I don't know, Mark.
Now we got away from...
So we do typically have a tree in Civic Plaza that has lights. But are you managing something like outside?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, where the community gets together, I show up.
Everyone wants Peter.
Mayor, then we have a countdown, five, four, three, two, one, the lights turn on, and everybody's happy. And everybody's just actually getting out and socializing with each other again.
I was going to ask a similar question. Where are you thinking it was going to be until it gets here on grounds, I understand?
There's several places in the cities that we could have it, but I was trying to think of something as centralized as possible to have people be able to see this tree, other than just at the event. Now, I hang out at the clock tower with the sign that says, "So many days till Christmas," quite often. And that's about as close to downtown Bloomington as you're going to get. But this plaza here seems like it's got a pretty big open spot, and you've got all kinds of parking back there. Maybe some vendors might want to be selling hot chocolate or something. I don't know.
Here's what I'll commit to you, Peter. I love the idea. I would suggest, yes, talk to Edinas, talk to Burnsville. Let's get some more details on this.
Right.
I like the work that you've done with community groups. I'll commit, if you can get this together, we will find you a place. Whether it's a park, whether it's here on Civic Plaza, whether it's, you know, over in the Creekside area, we'll find you a place. We can do that with you. But if you could start to move it on forward, let's make this happen. This is a great idea.
I know that I have plenty of legwork yet to do, and I just started... In fact, I was at the Rotary Club on Monday, pretty much unannounced. It was the first time I wasn't prepared with a speech whatsoever. I just kind of said, "I was thinking about free... What do you guys think?"
We will do that.
So it's moving along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And I can help you with Burnsville.
Good.
I know you've been on that project, so...
All right, what about that escalator?
Yeah, we're working on the escalator. Don't...
All right, we have to move along here.
It is a lot of comments, so you can talk about it if you want.
We have to move along. He took, possibly along there, Santa, but... Mark is striking 12.
It was pretty quickly what he wants to.
Only once a year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have any prepared remarks. But I came tonight, and first of all, I want to say thank you for implementing this program. I'm really excited about the public listening comment area like this, and I think it's innovative. And I'm sorry, that's my phone. I'm prepared. Anyway, the reason I'm here tonight is I just happened to be walking my dog down 84th Street near my house last week, and I noticed the reappearance of the traffic monitoring station, which I had requested, you may recall, a couple of years ago, to look at the traffic pattern and the safety issues at the 84th and Thomas intersection. And at that time, I asked, I came before you and asked about that to see if there was something we could do to better control traffic there, because it's really hard for pedestrians to cross that intersection. And at that time, the decision was made not to make any further changes to the one-way stop sign on Thomas. So now I'm seeing that traffic monitoring station go up again. And as I'm walking down 84th with my dog, I'm watching all of these speeding cars registering 40, 45 miles per hour. So I am here tonight to find out, is there some activity going on that might result in some better traffic control at 84th and Thomas, like a three-way stop?
When you say the traffic monitoring, is it the speed trailer that's out there, or a different...
Yep, it's the speed trailer that says, you know, flashes and says, "You're going too fast."
If I remember, there was one on the other side of Thomas not that long ago as well, let's say in the last year or so, on the going westbound, not on Thomas, sorry, on 84th Street, not that long ago as well. I feel like it happened over the summertime. And I didn't know at the time if they were doing just traffic studies, or if there was, to, you know, Sharon's point, something more specific. I don't know there. Do we know what they're looking at at the moment?
After the traffic, Carl, do you want to talk about the traffic study quickly versus just having the speed trailer?
Right, so traffic on streets like 84th is typically handled by two groups in the city, either by engineering, our Public Works Department, which is where I'm from. And those are typically, if there's a study, and we're trying to see how fast people are going, where they're turning, what the volumes are. And we probably not use that speed trailer, but we'd have some other devices. You look out on 98th Street, there's some tall traffic there for a study that's happening along 98th Street. The second is, in the police departments, they have a traffic unit. And they target areas that they know that they have ongoing traffic concerns. 84th Street certainly is one of them. So I don't know if the chief knows this, probably not, but I would expect it's our traffic unit is doing some focus enforcement. I think they find that even putting just those trailers out there without writing any tickets at all has a significant impact for a very short period of time on people's travel habits. Unfortunately, we'd expect that once the trailers leave, they probably go back to their normal activities within a week or two. But it is helpful for a bit, and it kind of tempers people down.
I think it, first of all, chief, you've been here three weeks, and people are still speaking. Sharon, what you're talking about, we've had this conversation, we continue to have this conversation, how to slow down traffic in our neighborhoods. And we need to look at it from the combination of enforcement, environment, and education, and outreach, that type of thing. We can't just ticket our way out of it. We can't just, we can't just ask people to do it. There's got to be a community-wide effort to slow people down. It absolutely does. We heard a great example from a neighborhood last time at our last meeting, I think, about the work that the neighborhood did to try and slow traffic in their neighborhood. It was a great example of it. And I think we need to have more of those conversations. We mentioned it, I think, at the start of the year for the Planning Department to bring forward something. Maybe we could kind of light a fire under planning, move this to the top of the to-do list, because it's absolutely an important thing. I just saw something on Twitter, somebody, again, blowing past a school bus, and kids getting injured. That just, it just has to stop. It has to stop, and we've got to figure out a way to do it. And again, short of, we're not going to have a police officer on every street corner to do this, so we've got to figure out other ways to make this work. So, but I appreciate your concern and agree with you, and I think everybody here agrees with you 100%, 100%.
Do we know, maybe, Carl, you know the answer to this. If I understood the intersection that you're specifically talking about, there is a pedestrian crosswalk there, right?
There is.
Yeah. Is there any way to add more oomph to that? Like, I know that there are all kinds of choices you could have about, like, letting them have a button and have the lights, like, so that, you know, the caution lights, other things. Do we know how much that costs?
There are lights.
So do you press a button?
Yep, you press a button to activate the lights, and even with that, it's hard to get across safely. In fact, the other day, when I was walking home with my dog, there was a man standing there, and...
And the lights were on?
Lights were on, and he was not going to step down into that crosswalk because the cars were coming up so hot and heavy. And so finally, the two of us kind of like did a bunch of waving. Pedestrians, and we did make it across, but you never know for sure.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I'm advocating for a three-way stop.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. And that's part of the environment piece of the puzzle there, you know, a three-way stop as opposed to yield sign, two-way stop. And then, but it does have to be the education, we just have to get people on board with this, and the enforcement. There has to be ramifications of consequences for folks to do that, so.
We know too, I mean, stop signs are not a good way to change people's behavior, per se. The trouble is, if people aren't anticipating a stop sign, chances are, they may just blow right through that stop sign. And if you put stop signs in places that don't make logical sense, and there's all kinds of engineering criteria that talk about what the warrants, they call them, are to make a stop sign, would actually make it significantly more dangerous. So that's something we want to be very, very careful about.
Okay, good to know. Yeah, I'm getting used to the one on 94th Street, near John Bear, and that's been there for 30 years.
I think there's still more, I mean, I don't want to assume, but, I mean, there's some pretty heavy-handed kind of, like, lighting path, lighting stuff, all kinds of things that really can make it impossible for you not to notice that somebody's trying to cross the street. I'm not saying they won't blow through it anyway. But I'm just wondering if there's some lower-cost, like, more immediate solutions we could, in our arsenal that we can consider too for these kinds of problem areas, intersections?
Yep, good point.
You know, I've seen, you know, conditional stop, for example, when it's lit up, right, then you have to stop, or even stuff comes down. I mean, there's just all kinds of choices that the team would have potentially.
And the new, we just installed one on part of the D-line project over by Walmart on the Red Bullard, a hawk signal.
Yep, I saw that.
Really obnoxious flashing light that comes on when people are using it. Also includes pedestrian islands in the middle of the road. Again, that costs probably a half a million dollars. So the question is, at what level do we start installing? But there are, to your point, there are other devices that address this kind of thing.
Can I ask, Jamie, can we light a fire under planning or Public Works, whoever we assign this to? I can't recall. You can't get a public works?
As a matter of fact, the engineering folks did an initial scope of what a traffic calming or speed reduction plan might look like. So we'll go back and revisit that. I think it's going to be pretty heavy on engagement. When we produced it at the beginning of last year, there wasn't a whole lot of engagement that was going on. So we'll go brush that off.
Okay. I don't mean to cut you short. We got one more. We just...
No, I...
Can you just come in this here and we'll go to that? Thank you so much. Andy, can you get it done in three or four minutes?
I think so.
Good.
I know I didn't register to speak. So real quick, I had some conversation with Bloomington Public Schools, Debbie Belfry. I copied Mayor and Lana in on that, about a career and technical showcase coupled with business and industry. So I'm hopeful that the city council, or, you know, you guys will host it. Looks like Bloomington Public Schools does not want to host the event. But you guys got connections to the business community already. So I'm hoping that we can maybe have Jefferson come over, maybe half a day, maybe Bloomington Kennedy come over the other half a day, and then maybe open up to the community at large, you know, for the entire day. I work for the largest technical college in the state of Minnesota, Head of Tech. We do these all over the place, right, and they're well-received from the community. And I was really surprised that Bloomington Public Schools did not want to do it in each of their gymnasiums like the other schools do. But I got to know, so you guys know about that. So I think that's a good positive thing for the city. So I hope you guys embrace it, take it, and roll. I'd be happy to help you. Why is that a high school has a lot of contacts and ways that they do it, but it's really a good event.
No, we talked about this type of thing before, and I think...
On the phone before, and I hope to see it kind of come to, you know, and I know Lana's been on it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Two things on that, that I, just for everybody else's benefit too. I had talked to Barb Wolf specifically about it at the time we first had that conversation. Because of her role right now is interim on the HRA, she doesn't have the bandwidth. But that is an interim thing, and so that may shore up in time for, let's say, spring of 2023, for example, whatever.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of work to put one on. I mean, because you've got to get out, you know...
Super enthusiastic, and I don't want to speak for her, but I know that when she and I talked, she was super enthusiastic about it. And I think one of Andy's points that I thought was really good is that, you know, especially right here in this area, whether you're thinking about Donaldson, or you're thinking about the Ziegler folks, or all these other, you know, folks, they, we're very, we're flush with the kinds of folks who would benefit from that. And I know our, you know, our partners in the carpenters and other unions who have their apprenticeship programs would be thrilled to participate as well, because that's a leap right into a good-paying job. And, you know, so there's a lot of, I think, opportunity for us to bring this stuff.
The unions are always at the ones that we're at, too. The trades unions are all there, and they have great mockups and things for kids to do. So the fact that kids are not just going to walk around aimlessly in City Hall here. They're going to, they're going to be engaged when they're in our booths or they're doing our thing. So it's really engaging to see the kids, and they'll keep, we'll keep them here in Bloomington. We have so many industries here that we're doing, highlighted enough. So, Dwight?
So, do I?
Yeah, so, anyway, I, I kind of recall, we used to do something like a Bloomington Open for Business type thing. I think the manager used to lead something like that, if I remember right, or what the title of it used to be, but, who used to invite all the businesses to come in. I can't remember what the name of it was, but we had this kind of conversation with, with businesses. I don't know if we're still doing that, but man, I'd be sure to ask to partner something